Mr. Bowman.
And we're live.
Great.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, Tuesday, the 23rd of February, 2021. Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Okay, from the top.
Item number one, December 2020 cash flow report summary.
Item open.
This item is open and we have the deputy controller here to speak on that.
Good morning, gentlemen. As we stated last week, this summary report was filed based off, we originally submitted. I discussed these bullet items with December's cash flow report. And we submitted a summary of what I discussed for December with this group, but then the controller felt that we should also share the same information with the public. So this is more just FYI.
Any questions, gentlemen, on that item? Okay, motion received and filed.
Motion received.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number two, fiscal year 2020 to 2021 second quarter gap response.
Item.
Okay, this item is open and the deputy controller is going to speak on this as well.
Yes. We, every year, every quarter, the administration, along with the compt- uh, Controller's Office, review the city's financials quarterly. Administration, they estimate or review based off their results and we do the same. The report you guys have initially, when we did our review for us, the Controller's Office, we were projecting the city to finish in a negative of around 23.9 million at the end of this current fiscal year. We filed this report, which you got with this body a couple of weeks ago, prior to us having the opportunity to sit down with administration. So after we sat down with the administration and reviewed some of our concerns or our numbers, our group, First Controller's Office, we're projecting a loss of around 13.4 million for the year, whereas administration is projecting a positive 2.6 million. So that's around like a $16 million swing between the two bodies of government. Some of the variances that we've noted between what the Controller's Office reported compared to what the administration is reporting is, one is with state aim payments. Where we're that communications are underway in regards to the state returning 95% of deferred revenues, deferred aim payments from June 2020 and also December 2020. We, our group, First Controller's Office, we reported receiving that money this fiscal year, whereas administration haven't in their numbers. So we're saying that the city should receive an additional 42, estimated 42.9 million in state aim payments, hopefully by March 31st, at the end of the state's fiscal year. We also reported additional sales tax revenue than what was originally budgeted, around 14.6 million. We reported additional sales tax in our numbers based off our calculation compared to what the administration reported. Third stimulus, we didn't, we haven't reported the 65.1 million in stimulus in our numbers, whereas administration did. We didn't report the tribal compact money of 11 million, administration did, and we didn't. So those are some of the variances far as what the Controller's Office reported compared to what the administration reported. As everyone is aware of, on this call, there's been a lot of conversation in regards to getting a third stimulus package passed and almost like, I believe, 300 something million coming to the city. And also communications as early as yesterday in regards to the city receiving tribal compact revenue. We'll continue to monitor both situations. It do look positive, but we'll report it as we receive it or the funds come in. But it's, it's very promising if these two items do occur. And like I said, we're showing a loss of 13.4 million, not including any federal stimulus, not including any tribal compact revenue. If those two items come, come this fiscal year, we believe the city will be in good shape at the end of fiscal year 2020, 2021. But the controller will also like, everyone to know is that we can't go back to the practices of yesterday. We really, it's like a second shot the city will have if all this come together. Whereas if we get this additional stimulus, 300 plus million plus, whatever from the tribal compact, this would be a great time for the city to set aside the payoff that revenue deficiency now with 25 million by December 2020, 21, and also revisiting the fund balance replenishment plan. But this conversation, we know our group has submitted a revised replenishment plan. We understand this group has also been in discussions with a plan. And we think if all this come together at, by the end of fiscal year, they, we'll, we'll be in good shape and this will be the good time not to go back to yesterday and try to have a funding saved up for a true rainy day.
Administration, you want to comment? Mr. Estrich? You're on mute, okay. You having technical difficulties?
Not enough coffee this morning. Um, we, we do agree on a lot of the things, of course, we are very confident that we'll get the federal stimulus. And as the report yesterday, that was kind of the last resort for the Senecas right now, they can go to the Supreme Court. Um, and there may be some delay, but we don't believe the Supreme Court will hear that. So we're very confident that we'll get the casino money, plus we will get federal aid. So I, I agree with the deputy controller that we're going to have a very strong finish to this fiscal year. And, you know, we have been working very hard on keeping our expenditures down. If you, you know, I did want to make a comment on the cash flow. If you looked at the beginning of the year, the projection for January was going to be a negative 32 million or something like that. And we ended up a negative 5 million. So we are, you know, being very careful and very conservative in our expenditures going forward.
Uh, Council President Pridgen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I heard what I was going to ask, but I just want to make sure. So there is, there is no other recourse for the Senecas at, at, at this point. Can they still just hold out and make us take them back to court or is the court siding with the city or with state?
The court is citing saying that they agreed to this contract and they have to follow it. You'd have to speak to law department if they can just hang on to the money. I don't know the actual mechanisms for that. Cause they're discussing the sports betting, so assumption is they're going to move forward and not move forward with giving that to them until they've paid us in full, paid the New York State and the municipalities in full.
And do you know, and I know this is not your area, but because you're on, I'll ask, do you know whether, because of pandemic, they even have that amount to be able to give to the state? Or was it held in escrow?
Oh, it's been in escrow. That, that dollar amount, they spoke to 480, I believe, 480 million, that's all in an escrow account.
Okay, what, what I do think is, we probably do need that information of, can they hold on to this? Or if the court compels them or orders them to pay it, then when that would come, I think that that's very important. I also agree with the deputy controller, you know, that there is a gap. And I think we have to prepare in case something doesn't come through. In case, I mean, I think we're pretty good on the stimulus, but what concerns me is, is the compact. So thank you for the information. And also, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the deputy controller. He sent those bullet points that we asked for, that I asked for, and it made it so much easier to later come back. So I just encourage him, as much as he can do that, it really helps not only the council to understand the data, but I think the public also. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other comments, questions? Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much. Mr. McDowell mentioned that should we receive the stimulus, federal money from stimulus money, that it is a one-time thing that we shouldn't go back to the practices of the past where we use our reserve funds. If we do get $300 million and it seems like quite a bit of money, I imagine it is not for us to just put it in the savings account. Imagine there's some strings attached from the federal government. They're not just going to give us $300 million to put in a savings account. I'd like to know what the strings are. They come with the stimulus money, what the administration's plans are for the stimulus money. I know it, they're including, they're including it in their budget. So hopefully they can give us an idea how they plan, I mean, pay off debt, obviously. But $300 million is a lot of money. I'd like to see how it's, that, what the conditions or requirements are. And then secondly, we haven't heard much about the reserve fund policy that we have talked about in the past. Is this something that the administration is now looking at doing? So we can start replenishing the fund balance. Over the years, I think we voted on a number of budgets, we as council members.
Reserve for the 300 million, you know, I, I don't know what the strings or what the requirements will be when we get that. I think that we all know when that comes in. Certainly, there will be some restrictions on it, but there will also be money for our budget and for the city.
Okay.
The, moving forward, we would, you know, put some in fund balance, get back to somewhere we have a reserve in our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, and be able to pay off our deficit note for next year.
And I agree, it should go to the reserve fund, but we should have a reserve fund policy to make sure going forward that that we replenish that fund balance whenever we use it. We have to have something in place. I don't want to go back to voting on budgets that just go for the reserve funds with no plans to replenish it going forward. We've done this over the years as council members. We voted on budgets, used up the reserve funds to the point where we don't have it. And I don't want to continue to vote on budgets where we're using up the reserve funds and leaving that to future administrations and to the residents and the taxpayers of the city of Buffalo. So at some point, I'd like to see a reserve fund policy that the Controller's Office have recommended, petting rating agencies have recommended, I believe even the control board. Yet, we still don't have a policy. I think we need to make sure that we have a policy in place going forward, and I hope we work on that now that we're going to receive the stimulus money. Thank you.
Colleagues, any, anyone else? Um, Councilmember Bowman?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and kind of I'm glad to hear the conversation go that way. And I think those are wise words from our deputy controller, saying that, you know, we were, we, we were left pretty vulnerable in this situation without having any reserve fund. I think the county was able to do a little better because they had some funds in the bank and they made some cuts. But I'm happy to hear the conversation going that way. And I'm glad to hear that we'll, we'll be paying off some of the, the debt we incurred in, in our past years and, and the fiscal year. So just, we'll be watching it very closely and, and we're glad we have some, some prospects, but, and, and the fund balance policy as well. I want to see that get done. So I'm glad to hear we have a little bit of a pat now. Thank you.
Thank you. I will want to thank the controller for her second quarter gap sheet. To me, it seems like it was right on as far as some of the concerns. I'm still very concerned about these numbers, especially as it pertains to the stimulus. I know some people have said 300 million, I, I, I like to kind of under, undersell, over deliver because I don't know where the 300 million came from. However, even the S and P said, you know, getting that one shot is not going to fix our revenue issues. So I don't want us to be short sighted that this, this, this lump sum of money is going to fix our woes. We still have issues and the S and P has even stated that, this council has stated that. So I, I know we've been promised this and we keep saying, I'm confident, I'm confident, I'm confident. Well, until it's done, it's done, but it's not done as of yet. So I'm happy to hear that there's a prospect. But again, all the outlooks continue to talk about the city's fiscal situation tied to the Board of Education. So thank goodness for the Board of Education, because we really be in a pretty bit, a pretty mess right now. But again, the controller was right on point. I'm glad that we're trying to have these conversations now about how we move forward, because I think it's incredibly important. I know the council has been on the forefront, talking about the various issues, especially the fund balance replenishment and how we spend our money going forward. We have some opportunities with our surpluses in the enterprise fund. So there is hope and there's light at the end of the tunnel, but we have to make the right decisions. And I hope that administration will work with the council and the Controller's Office to make certain that we move forward in a, a more logical manner and not just haphazardly. Because, you know, the monies that we spent like that, you know, put us in a serious bind. And there may be future pandemics, it's already been put out there, there may be future pandemic. So we need to prepare ourselves fiscally as well as a city to make certain that we can adapt to those things. We want to move to, can we just table this item and move to one, number six, I believe? Take the number six out of order?
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Motion to take item six out of order.
Numbers, to maybe take a number six out of order.
Second quarter gap, 2020 to 2021.
Okay, Commissioner Estrich?
Hi, our deputy director, Jessica Brown of administration is going to go over the gap with you.
Okay, Jessica.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just to summarize the second quarter gap, as Delano mentioned, we are showing a small surplus, $2.6 million. This is for various reasons, our revenues were expecting to be a little bit lower than we had budgeted. One reason is because of the drop in business for licenses and permits, about 10%. And then our parking revenue is going to be at least 40% lower than we thought. But to offset that, our sales tax revenue, we've increased $5 million for now. And we're hoping it will be higher than that by the end of the year. We expect it will be. For the, on the expense side, we're about $14 million lower than we had budgeted. Most of this is due to departmental expenses from vacant positions and other non-personnel positions such as supplies. And also we have some general charges that were lower than we thought, healthcare, workers' comp and utilities. So overall, for the second quarter, we're looking at a conservative projection of about $2.6 million of a surplus. Any questions?
You, you're, you're thinking that you're going to have a $2.6 million surplus? Even though for the next three to four years, we're going to have negative cash flow? Yes, just. Excuse me?
Yes, with the assumption that we're getting our casino money and we're getting the federal stimulus.
Um, I just got to ask, why, why do we continue to put that out there when for the last three years it hasn't happened? So I would just think we will project on a conservative level that we may not get it and look at how do we adapt from that? And then once we receive it, then plug it in. But it just seems like we just got to plug that number in there when we don't really have a solid idea. I mean, when they pass a stimulus, are we going to get that money instantaneously? You know, I think Councilmember Rivera was asking, what are the details behind it? And we don't know them as of yet. We don't know how it's going to be sent to us. Is it going through the state or is it coming directly to the city?
That's true. We do.
Yeah, so, so I mean, I'm trying not to be so critical. I'm just happy, I know we got something coming through. But just from a financial perspective, you will be conservative in what your estimations are based on the fact that we don't have all the information. You know, we, we still, I mean, even the tribal compact, I mean, the tribal compact, we've been putting up 11 million, but aren't we owed more than? I mean, we're owed much more than 11 million, correct?
Certainly.
What, what is that number, Commissioner?
It's closer to 35 million.
Okay. So, so I mean, there's some positive things that we definitely can look at. And I think the deputy controller said it, you know, best, you know, how we have to, you know, not do the same things that we did in the past. So, I mean, so I, I still think it's positive. I just think that again, when we're looking at numbers that are thrown out, and I don't know where the 300 million came from. Was that from the congressman or someone that said the city's going to get 300 million? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, that's where those numbers come from.
Okay, Deputy Controller?
Yeah, basically, I was going to follow up to what Commissioner Estrich just stated. That was information we received. That's been in news, been articles in regards to how much the city of Buffalo will receive. And, and just following up to what you just said in regards to being conservative. We've been conservative, we're, we're not reporting 65 million, administration's reporting 65 million. And nine times out of 10, it'll probably be more than that. So I think that is being conservative, but like you guys are saying, it's been going on for whatever period of time. But I, I think at, at one point, we were saying we wouldn't receive it. But now I think based off the House looking to pass a third stimulus by the end of this week, and then it going over to the Senate and everybody hoping that everything get approved by first, second week of March. So once all that information become available, we'll share that with this group. And you, I'm pretty sure you guys can get the information also. So I think, like I said before, I think we had a, a good point, but it's just fixing what we did yesterday, do better tomorrow.
Yeah. Now, any other comments, colleagues? Councilmember Majority Leader?
Yes, and we were speaking to our federal delegation regarding the stimulus. And this is making its way through caucus right now, through the, through the House and then the Senate. Have we spoken to representatives in terms of some of the details? I know it's 1.9 trillion dollars, but there's a lot in the details, especially whether it goes for municipalities or through the state. And then secondly, I'm just curious to know how that money can be used. It, it's not like they're going to give us, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars and we're going to put it in a savings account. Because I don't think they would give us money for us to put in a savings account. It has to go to something perhaps related to COVID. Perhaps, you know, our, our, our budget that's out of whack as a result of COVID. But that's a lot of, of money. And I'd just like to know how we can use that money. Perhaps we have to use our own money for the surplus and use their money towards a lot of the debt that we've incurred. So I, I think it's just a matter of us trying to figure out, you know, are we going to take money from our budget to replenish the fund balance and then use their money to pay off some of the debt that we have? We're just trying to get an idea of how this is going to, and I know you don't have the answers right now. But that's why I asked if we're in talks with our delegation to find out a little more detail, because that way we can project out what we're going to do.
We do speak with our federal delegation and those conversations that you're, those questions you're asking are still being worked out on the federal level? How it's coming in, will there be strings attached? Can we use it to replace our revenues that came in lower than projected? Can it be used to replace expenditures that were low, that were over budgeted? So all the information is still being discussed right now.
Yeah, because one of the comments, one of the questions I have is, you know, I know the state is committed, I guess, right, to giving us, replacing the, the aim money that we, that they reserved, the hell back. So if the money goes to the state, are they going to replenish us from that money? Not necessarily, necessarily giving us any new money. So it's all those type of details that I guess we would like to know.
Right, and they wish for a direct payment. We certainly are wishing for a direct payment now through the state.
Okay, um, I know the controller mentioned 8.8 million in payout for claims. How, how are we addressing that? Do we have the, I mean, I know we budgeted only 2.2 million, but how are we addressing that?
Those are claims that are put as probable for the year. We have come to the point where it's come to council to get approved to pay those out at this point.
So will we just, we will just hold off on those until the next, maybe the next fiscal year?
They would say the law department determines what is a probable lawsuit. And they give that to the accounting department is what they book in that account. But until it comes to final agreement, we, there's nothing to be done with that. It comes to agreement and then we would pay the lawsuit.
But, but the 8.8 million, that's a real number?
I have to speak more with, on the accounting, I believe it's the high end of what the probable is.
Okay.
It, it's actually, it's the average, the corporation council gives us a low and high range and we use the average for that and we compare the payout history to previous years. But 8.8 is the full, it's at, that's as of June 30th of 2020, and that's updated annually. So that is a somewhat dated number, but um, we do that once a year. And we, so as of June 30th, we're looking at 8.8 and we have about $3.3 million of what's assigned in the assigned fund balance. So that's, that's, that's all that's left. We can only have 3.3 million in fund balance to assign that. So the difference is remaining, is there's no fund balance to cover any of that potential. And it's not expected to be paid out within the next year, but that's more in the semi near future. It's not like 10 years from now, but it's not expected to be paid out in the next year or two.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And again, I think the controller, because she's on point with, you know, the information that she's providing. It's because we need to be, need to be aware of what those things are coming through. And the good news is that we do have a Democratic House and Senate, and we should be getting this money, just need details. Commissioner, one more question regarding, are we doing travel? We're doing travel?
I don't know.
Is the city doing travel? I mean, we having people go places right now into different meetings and events?
Um, there may be some training for police and fire.
I'm, I'm looking at the, the second quarter departmental expenditures and I'm seeing travel expenses. So I'm just trying to ask question like, are we all doing Zoom? I mean, I, you know?
Well, some of those are registration and membership costs also.
And you just put it in travel?
Yes, they go under the same, but let me look at what you're looking at, so we're.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking throughout and I'm just seeing, I, I know that you booked money for travel, but then, you know, I'm looking at, you know, 47,000 spent for travel in one line. And I'm like, where, where are we going?
Um, sometimes we used to have to go and pick up prisoners, I know. I mean, there are different expenses like that that we cover. We do.
Would that be under the executive, though?
Excuse me?
Would that be under the executive, that type of expenditure for something like that? That would be in the police, correct? I, I mean, the police department has minimal, but you know, I'm just looking at other numbers and I'm just like, wow, that's interesting. I just thought right now, we'd probably be doing more Zoom than anything. Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Sir?
Commissioner, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the travel. So that's your meals and lodging and your registration and membership fees too. So that's
Okay.
Included all in there. Um, year to date, you know, there's not that much in travel, actual travel, travel. So it is the registration and membership is your biggest account there.
Okay, and, but I would think that we wouldn't even be paying that right now, Commissioner. We broke.
Registration?
Yeah, those fees, I mean, wouldn't we kind of, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand where we are when, you know, we have no money and we're paying things like that that are to me luxuries. I mean, there are benefits if, if we have the money, but if we don't, you know, shouldn't we be canceling or some of those things for this year at least?
We have reduced them, but some of them are memberships where you get best practices, like through police. I mean, they have seminars for people through our HR department, they have seminars.
Okay.
People are learning things, so it's a benefit to the city.
Okay.
And there is not travel right now associated with it. So it is a plus that they are doing them on the Zoom meetings.
Okay, thank you. So my motion to table, seconded by Councilmember, as it's a Councilmember Wingo. Next item.
Item number three, interfund loan, entertainment district, infrastructure improvements.
Items open.
Okay, that item is open and the deputy controller is going to speak on that?
Uh, yes, we submitted interfund loan requests for improvements for entertainment district. We do have a grant that was approved by this body. And like the majority interfund loans, we have to incur costs upfront and then we get reimbursed. And we accept this item and get approved, so Department of Public Works can get started for this project. And we attached a summary sheet and that's a part of the controller. We will submit a summary sheet of what interfund loans are outstanding. We will also provide any information we receive from DPW along with our reconciliation from our accounting group.
Okay, but thank you for the information. Can we just talk about those outstanding items? Because I know some of them are old, I mean, we have some as far back as 2013, 2012. Just to kind of refresh us on how this Just to kind of refresh us on how this town actually works.
Well, a couple of things. There's one, there's some of the items that you might see in the past year, these like revolving amounts. So we normally need the initial date in, in munis.
Okay.
That's why you see those older dates. And then, two, with the interfund loan, this is money that we use to start capital projects. We receive grants from various locations, and, and with the majority of these grants, they require the receiver to incur costs upfront and then supply information in regards to progress on the completion of the project. And, and projects can take whatever period of time. But our accounting department do work with D P W primarily and, and work on what's the status of these requests. And, and that's been a, a drive for the Controller to keep an eye on the interfund loans, that we do have outstanding. But we also do understand that projects have delays and it takes time for grants for the city to get reimbursed. But we do have an individual assigned to monitor this monthly, and it's a report that.
So, so the, the, what we have right now, which is like fourteen million, that's fourteen million outstanding. That's a, and I guess I have to ask you about this, shouldn't this be a debit and not a credit? Or am I looking at it wrong?
You're looking at it wrong, because basically, I mean, it's, 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 it's a cash account, but still like a, a credit, whereas this is outstanding. So right now, I think we got one point, I think, a million dollars.
But, but we're owed money, right? We're, we supposed to be reimbursed once we, once we.
It's an interfund account. We're not owed any, it's an interfund account between departments within the city of Buffalo.
Okay.
It was not as if it's a loan where we're getting interest. It's just money that, in order for us to get projects started, we use our own money. And then, once the grant come in to reimburse us, we reduce the amount, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Okay, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Next item.
Item number four, Moody's Investors Service, city of Buffalo, bond rating twenty twenty-one.
Item's open.
Item is open?
If I could, since we, we do have, the city went out to market. We had some bonds that we wanted to refund, two thousand eleven bonds for the city along with the Board of Education. Part of the refunding process was to get a bond rating, so we asked or requested S and P and Moody's to rate the city of Buffalo finances. And as you guys see the write-up between both agencies, one, Moody's kept the city's rating the same and also the outlook. Whereas the second one, S and P, they kept the rating for the city the same, but the outlook, they changed it. They reduced it from steady to negative, and primarily due to the revenue concerns. Which S and P also noted was items that can change our rating, our outlook back to steady, and then what can also reduce our rating. As we've discussed on this call, or first to get back to, we did do a refund. We had a refunding for the two thousand eleven bonds last week, Thursday. The city was able to receive an interest rate of point three seven percent on borrowings of ten million dollars. Whereas last year, when we did the same type of refunding, we had an interest rate of point nine four percent. So with that being said, it's like, there's interest for the city. Even with this refund, we received eight bids. Out of those eight bids, we end up picking B and Y Mellon Capital Markets. So even though there's concerns with the city, the rating agencies, I mean, there was a, a public out there that wanted to buy bonds from us. We have to continue, I think, to do what we doing, but to get back, I think we also need to make sure, as far as the outlook, to be able to get our outlook to go back to stable from negative. We have to have this stimulus money come in along with this casino, and that's some of the items that they noted in their response. So everyone in this call is aware of what the city needs to do, and once that money do come in, we just need to make sure we manage it and we, and we spend it the right way.
Any questions? Any comments, colleagues, questions? I just want to echo what S and P said. I mean, the things that the council has been saying is, I believe, the same thing that S and P said. And I think we had a representative from the city say that the last time we got something from Moody's, they were wrong. And, okay, I'm, I'm not as smart as the folks at Moody's, but I don't think that I'm in a position to say that somebody is wrong when this is what they do as a, for their living. And the things that we've talked about are things that we very well know, it's public information. They talked about their uncertainty of timing of revenues. They talked about the one shot, which, again, I said, and I think we've said on the council, that one shot is not going to fix our economic outlook. It will help us if we put some other things in place, and if we can have additional revenues. However, I don't think that even schools on cameras are going to save us financially. It may wreck us as far as our, the public opinion as well as impacting the poor in a dramatic way. But, you know, we just have to get our house in order. And again, I'm hopeful that working with the Controller's Office and the administration, working collaboratively, we can come out with something that, again, helps us financially and hopes that we can improve our outlook for ours, our own standing. Because, you know, when I hear that the Board of Education is included in our standing, I mean, we have to do what we have to do right now. But I really wish the city, and I'm hopeful that the city can stand on its own as far as our reserves and make it certain that we can take care of our own operation and not depending on someone else, because everything changes. I know that the school board is looking to open up other schools, and they're going to be needing the cash for P P E and those things. So, you know, we, I, I would rather, and I'm hopeful that we can have, manage our own operation so that we're not depending on someone else for us to be able to meet the needs of our public. Any other comments, colleagues? Okay, Commissioner Estridge?
You know, I, Moody's was very positive, and they recognized all the things we have been doing to support the city and, you know, make sure we had a, a balanced budget, and, you know, the things that the mayor's been doing throughout the, you know, with all the small businesses and supporting the small businesses and helping the residents with their rents and mortgages and things like that. And both of the reports did acknowledge that we are doing a lot for the city and trying to raise up everybody within the city. And they also, and the S and P gave us a warning, I agree with that, but they do, you know, make the comment that the city's economic momentum has turned around and that we are moving forward, and they both recognize that also. You know, so S and P was giving us just, let's go forward on it.
Yeah.
We are, you know, it was also dependent upon the stimulus which will be coming, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, even though it was a downgrade, I don't think it was totally negative. I mean, I, I totally agree with you.
No, it definitely was not. It kept our credit rating at the A plus.
Yeah.
And as the Deputy Controller said, we got point three seven percent interest on that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's pretty darn good.
Those are the facts. I agree with you. Those are the facts. Any other comments? Okay, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember, Council President Pritchard.
Item number five, S and P Global Ratings, city of Buffalo, bond rating twenty twenty-one.
Item's open.
Well, we, we kind of covered that one. Do we need to discuss it any further? Any comments from colleagues? I think we already talked about it. I can't see everybody. Okay, no other comments. We can table that also. Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Anything else?
No, nothing else.
No further items? Okay. Motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Bowman. Happy birthday, Councilmember Bowman. Thank you.